Now, this juncture is normally where I talk about, you know, things that go through the city and report from the perspective of the mayor's office or the administration, or just what's going on in Aurora. So today is a little bit different, you know, we will, we want to conclude this meeting, you know, honoring all our friend, everybody knows and loves the deputy mayor Chuck Nelson. You know, let me say, let me say this, let me say this, me and, now you got, some of you all may not know, you know, Chuck and I, you know, we go back far. I was a young community-based prosecutor here in the city of Aurora and Chuck was an alderman. And, um, you know, we did a lot of work together. And I first decided I wanted to run for mayor, you know, back in 2003 and worked, you know, worked on it for a whole year to about 2004. The election actually was in 2005, so it was like a two-year election. But process, but in 2004, I called, I called Chuck Nelson, an alderman at the time, and I said, Chuck, why don't you meet me down at the roundhouse, man, I gotta, I got a question for you, you know, and I called Chuck down and we, you know, we sat, sat at the roundhouse, Walter Payton's roundhouse back then. And I said, man, I, if I, I'm running for mayor, as you know, and I would like you, if I win, to be my deputy mayor. I said that way back in 2005. And I recognized Chuck's value to, to the city, value to our community, and just his, you know, his all-around value as a human being. And I wanted him to be a part of my team way back then. Now, I didn't make it back then, it probably worked out the best, I was only about 35 years old. And Chuck's hair was a whole lot, whole lot browder back then as well.
That's for sure.
Yeah, Chuck, uh, you know, Chuck smiled as he normally does, you know, slapped me on my back and says, you know, let's talk about it if you should win. And, and, and we walked away from that with, with a feeling, a good feeling, a feeling that I kept all these years. You know, so, um, then in 2017, when I finally ran and, and, and and gained the office of mayor, an office that I've been working for, for so long, I said, uh, I said, uh, what, I'mma, I'mma call my buddy Chuck, who was on the way to retiring. And I'm gonna say, man, remember that conversation we had all those years ago? Well, now I think it's time. And I asked Chuck to be the deputy mayor. Now Chuck says like, we don't have a deputy mayor here in the city of Aurora. We didn't have it back then in 2005, we don't have it now. I said, well Chuck, you're gonna be the first one. And it'll only work, and we'll only get approval if it's somebody like you, because people recognize the value you could bring to a community. And you can be that person, because everybody loves you, that you could be that person when, when I'm not around, or you know, and I need somebody to, not just fill in, but somebody to, you know, push Aurora forward and make people know that, you know, we got somebody that, you know, represents our interests. I said Chuck's that guy. And he said, Mayor, let me call you back. So he called me back the next day after speaking to his wife, he says, I'd be honored to be the, to be the first deputy mayor of the city of Aurora and join your team. And, and I can tell you that in 2005, 2004, or 2005, when I asked him, and, and when I asked him in 2017, that was probably one of the, the best decisions that I made. And I'm glad to have had Chuck as the first deputy mayor of the city of Aurora. It could have only been Chuck, you know, and, and I'm glad it was. Whoever follows in Chuck's footsteps and fills his shoes, they're gonna, you're gonna have, you know, big shoes to fill. You know, um, you know, everything changes, you know, change happens, you know, and this is one that I, I, you know, didn't necessarily want, but knew that it might happen. So when Chuck sat me down, I recognized, you know, you know, this, 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 this partnership that we have built is, is, is coming to an, to an end, but we'll always have those memories recognizing what Chuck did for the city of Aurora. The team that, that we pulled together, Chuck and I, and Alex Alexandria, Alex Boyd, Maria Lindsay, it, it couldn't have happened, if we couldn't have been together with, the way we were glued together without Chuck as the person, you know, keeping us all together and, and, and keeping it, you know, just, just, just keeping us on point. And I appreciate that about, about Chuck, recognized way back then, got the chance to experience. I recognized way back then, 2005, got the chance to experience in 2017, and I wouldn't have ever done it any other way. You know, um, so Chuck, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, brother, you know, thank you for being a part of the team. Thank you for agreeing to join my administration. I know you're on your way to retirement, and this was, you know, four years that you probably didn't expect that you were gonna be extra years you were gonna be working for the city, but you did it, man, you did it with class, as, as you do everything with class.
Thank you.
So, uh, you know, I'd like to, now the alderman will be speaking, you know, after, you know, we, we, we do some special things for Chuck this evening, but I just wanted to say before I read these proclamations, how I felt about you and what you have done for the city and how you've helped this administration move Aurora forward. You know, Chuck, you've helped put us on the map, man, and I want to thank you for that. So today, I want to read this, it is my honor to read this proclamation for Chuck Nelson. Whereas Deputy Chuck, Deputy Mayor Chuck Nelson is a proud son of Aurora who was born and raised, graduated from East Aurora High School, proudly raised his own family here and dedicated decades of service through his professionalist professions and his passion to his hometown. And whereas the name Chuck Nelson is so synonymous with the city of Aurora, that he has become a local icon and and because of his commitment, compassion, and care for others and for the betterment of Aurora, which he does with a customary smile, good nature, and timeless, timeless swag. And whereas Chuck Nelson has had a stellar career of public service from his years at Fox Metro Water Reclamation District to his nearly three-decade-long career at City Hall. He began in 1993 as Ward Four Alderman, a position he held for 12 years and continued as a municipal executive, beginning in 2006 as Assistant Chief of Staff, and then in 2005 as Director of Neighborhood Standards and concluding as the city's first-ever deputy mayor from 2017 to 2020. Whereas Chuck Nelson's professional career is complemented by a just as equal stellar tenure of community service, where he has served on numerous boards and committees over the years, including the Presence Mercy Medical Foundation, Family Counseling Services, St. Peter's Church, the Metro West Council of Government, and the Aurora Veterans Advisory Commission. Whereas Chuck Nelson has been recognized over the years with such distinctions as the Aurora University George Peters Award, the Marie Wilkinson Spirit Award for Civic Leadership, the Mayor's Award of Excellence in Service, and countless others. Yet his most significant recognition are the countless lives he has changed over the years and all those he has touched. And that is why it goes without saying, everybody loves Chuck. Now therefore, I, Richard C. Irvin, Mayor of the City of Aurora, Illinois, do hereby proclaim his birthday, January 7th, as Chuck Nelson Day, and this, and this week of recognition and celebration, December 14th through December 18th, 2020, as Chuck Nelson Week in the City of Aurora. We honor his decades of commitment to his hometown. Let's give Chuck a round of applause. Now, uh, you're, you're absolutely welcome, my brother, you're absolutely welcome. Mr. Muhammad, you wanna, wanna start that video?
Oh, jeez.
Deputy Mayor, we have a, you know, we know you're a proud Tomcat and you love the A Tomcast. We know, we also know one of your favorite mascots is, is your buddy, uh, South Paul from, from the White Sox. So, South Paul wanted to give you a congratulations on your retirement as a favorite White Sox, but it's a little bit more than that.
Wow. Oh my gosh. Unbelievable. Unbelievable. Thank you. Yeah, one of my favorite songs. Thank you. Like Shakira and I can dance to this one.
Oh yeah, you know I'm ready.
I know it. Uh, thank you. Oh, wow. Thank you, South Paul. Oh, Lord. Thank you, South Paul. I'll get a chance to go into some Sox games this year, hopefully. Thank you.
One more.
Oh no, jeez, that's.
Congratulations Deputy Mayor.
Wow Clayton, thank you very much. Next time I, I get into a Sox game, I'm gonna have to buy South Paul a beer.
Absolutely. I want every alderman, every alderman to hold up that sign. Let Chuck know how we feel about him. Let Chuck know that we all love him. And although we're happy that he's retiring and we hate to see you go, we love you, brother.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
We appreciate everything that you've done for this city, from the time you're an alderman, from the time you worked with the previous administration, Tom Wise, and the time you worked with this administration, everything you've done for this city. And I believe that, uh, that our aldermen here will have a few, have a few remarks that they'd like to make. We'll start with, uh, start with, you know, Ward One, if you choose to speak, or Two, Alderman Yama Garza, whichever one, like to start off.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Chuck, everybody loves Chuck, that's, that's so accurate. I know with my short time on City Council, Chuck, you've been just a humongous help for me from dealing with specific issues with constituents to knowing who I should be contacting at the city and other government agencies. You're a true community leader and someone that was very important and helpful for me starting out and definitely a role model. And I appreciate all of your help and thank you for all of your service.
You're welcome and thank you.
Alderman Garza.
Can all ice creams be up? Can you put all of us up so we can see each other?
Only guess is, in behalf of the Latino community, really appreciate all what you do Chuck, because all the time when we have some concerns, issues, uh, we call you, and you are there for us all the time, all the time, all these years. Since I started, you know, all the time we taught you, and you came all the time to the Latino meetings we have. And if everybody was upset and screaming or whatever, you are so calm all the time. And the way you talk and everybody was quiet and they love you, they, they, they listen to you, whatever you're saying. I know when people is upset for something in the community, I invite you to the meetings and I'm sorry for that. But you are the only one, okay? I wouldn't miss you a lot, but you deserve your retirement and you deserve to enjoy the rest of your life, enjoy your grandkids, your kids, and really enjoy your retirement. Go back to Cancun, go back to Cabos, okay? When the COVID disappeared, please go there, it's so beautiful.
Thank you, Alderman Garza.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Chuck, uh, you are a class act, period. No more, no less. And I really hope you enjoy your retirement with your, with your family. But, uh, I remember still when I came to City Council, after I had put my papers in the run. And, uh, after the meeting, I approached you and I said, Chuck, any advice? And you did, you gave me advice. I just want you to not use none of it. But, but I wouldn't be as successful as a third ward alderman in the past four years without your help as deputy mayor, and even before that, uh, and the various positions you held in helping out. And I thank you very much, because my success is directly related to your success. All the best always for you and your family, and don't go too far.
Thank you very much, Ted. Thank you.
Fourth Ward Alderman, building it.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chuck, you know, I, I've been thinking all day what I wanted to say, and there's a couple of things that come to mind. And I'm gonna say again, the class act, you, you are, um, honest and straightforward, but you're, you're always appropriate. And, and I have been at a couple of meetings where, where you've stood in for the mayor and, and given out awards, maybe to firefighter, police officers. And not only did you give the award out, but you knew these people, you knew their families. And, and that's when we talk about, you know, how you represent Aurora so well. Um, you know, and I, I know that you, you, you have a tremendous memory too. I've never seen a guy, you know, pull up a name like, like you do and done a great job. But, but the other thing I want to say is that, um, you are probably the best listener that I've ever seen. I, I've, I know you've talked to me over the last eight years, helped me in numerous times, trying to, you know, figure out what the best thing to do. But I, I've seen you talk to others and you're attentive and, and you're, you're direct, you, uh, you're really, really in a class of your own. So thank you so much for, for your help with me and the fourth ward and the city of Aurora.
You're welcome, Alderman Donnell.
Fifth Ward Alderman, Carl Franco.
Yeah, um, Chuck, you're gonna get a lot of accolades and thank yous and stuff, and I'm, I'm on board with that. But, you know, I look at what you've done as a little bit different. I mean, you know, if we as elected officials or people that work in mayor's office, that's who we're seen as in the public. Not so much you. I think you, even though people know you're deputy mayor, they consider you a friend and a neighbor first. And I think that is very rare in this day and age, and I, and I think that might be the greatest compliment you can get. And it's so deserving when people think of you not as a deputy mayor, no you are, but as their friend and neighbor. And I, I wish that, I wish that on all elected officials, but it's like I said, it's very rare, but you certainly deserve it. And thank you for all your years of service, because for me, you've been a wonderful mentor and helped me out, and I'm assuming you have for a number of other aldermen that come along the way. So thank you for, for, for making that path for us a little bit easier. Appreciate that.
Thank you, and you're welcome, Alderman Franco.
Sixth Ward Alderman, Seville, Mike Seville.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, I think, and Chuck can maybe acknowledge this or not, the first time I met Chuck and Karen and his family was the night that Chuck took the oath of office as a newly-elected alderman of the fourth ward in 1993, 27 short years ago. And having just replaced Alderman Bob Connor, who had retired himself then, and just finished 12 years of serving on the city council as well. Uh, Chuck, Chuck was soon eventually appointed to serve on the finance committee and joined, and joined, um, Bob O'Connor and myself. So Chuck, Bob and I had the pleasure of working together on finance committee for almost 12 years. Chuck was working, um, uh, the third shift at the time at Fox Metro. So we began our meetings at 10:00 in the mornings to accommodate Chuck's schedule. I still don't know how you manage any sleep, uh, because you had to respond to your constituents during the day as well, so. So, um, I don't know when it officially started, but Chuck and I sooner or after officially began a habit of meeting in the parking lot near the former Inspections and Permits Building after both the committee, the hall meetings and the city council meetings. Now this would happen regardless of the temperature, if it's extremely hot or extremely cold, we'd be outside there procrastinating, or not, not procrastinating, but talking about, uh, the events of the day. Shivering, uh, or sweating, depending on the weather, you know, talking about items on the committee, the hall that we were placed on the agenda, or talking about those items in the city council that we just brought upon at our recent meetings. So, uh, we also talked about upcoming issues that were coming, being faced with the city, uh, issues in the community and to what was going on, of course, in our respective wards. And I think we kind of bounced ideas off to each other and kind of helped each other to help better serve our constituents. Uh, and our conversations also would cover family and even politics from the federal, state, and local level. And Karen, I know this for a fact, Karen would wonder what was taking Chuck so long to get home from, from the city council? Because she had dinner ready and she doesn't, she never did understand the, the things that we were talking about and, and the length of time that we just spent talking. We even talked about sports and the Bulls, as in those days, were in the, in the process of, uh, continuing to, to win championships. The Bears, not so much. Uh, we even talked about the White Sox and if they would ever win a World Series again. Well, they did.
Yeah.
Blackhawks won three and the Cubs won one. And, uh, I think Chuck and I came to believe that we solved all the problems of the world those Tuesday evenings. Uh, but Chuck always, Chuck, you always had your heart in the right place. You're a stand-up guy. Uh, you always looking to get, uh, things accomplished for the right reasons, uh, and doing the right things. Uh, you're always looking out for the best interests of your constituents and our community. You've certainly helped my ward on behalf of my, my 24,000 people that I represent. We thank you for your service. Uh, the ward is a better place, I think, for you. We will miss you Chuck at City Hall. Uh, 27 years is a good amount of time to make a difference and, and I think a positive difference you did make. So I wish you and Karen and your two daughters and your grandchildren, uh, well in your retirement. Uh, your shoes will be hard to fill. Uh, best of luck to you, and, and I just want you to know how I valued our friendship over the years and, and I'll look forward to continuing it as well in the future. So best of luck to you.
Thank you, Alderman Seville. I thank you.
Seventh Ward Alderman, Shakira Hardburn.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Chuck, I just want you to know. Everybody loved Chuck. Everybody loved Chuck. Everybody loved Chuck. Everybody loved Chuck. We love you, man.
They could cut down a couple of trees there.
Oh yeah. I have to say that Chuck is my brother. Let me explain. When Chuck was going through his sickness, I am not kidding, because he's my brother, I knew exactly what medicine he needed to make him feel better. I knew exactly what to tell Karen. I would call her, she would let me know what it was. His sister knew what the doctor was giving. But he's been my brother for nimmie a twin. When I got married, mm, my brother and my sister was there. And Chuck talked about the best feeling he had had at a wedding, he was laughing, he couldn't believe it. The best entertainment he enjoyed himself. He's been my brother all alone, but that's been so special to me that we have spent some great time together and great conversation. You are a true Auroraian. Your voice speaks loud. Everybody loves Chuck, because Chuck is a okay guy. And Chuck has been dynamic. He has truly, truly been strong, knowledgeable, helpful. And don't y'all forget, y'all who give everything away. Whatever people act like, he tried his best to give it or do it. No one can replace you Chuck. No one's shoes is big enough to do what you've done. But I know you're gonna enjoy them grandbabies, ooh, they already four, and they can't wait for Papa to get home. They can't wait to see you and to love you. You've been a great husband, a great father, and now a great papa. Granddaddy is gonna be in service, and I would tell you this, Chuck, you take that time out for yourself. Take care of yourself and love on my sister. Make sure that you give her that what she need. I know she gonna give you that what you need. But the blessings on you. I'm happy, happy to have you as my brother. And I am here to say, 25 years is a long time, but Chuck, we love you. We love you Chuck. We love you. Whatever you've done, you kept a smile on your face, even in pain. But I'm here to say on this day, I am smiling with you, because I know you're gonna have a great retirement. And the blessing of God is all around you. Chuck, keep on doing great things in your retirement. Laugh a lot, laugh a lot for real, go many places you can. Enjoy, enjoy, enjoy. I love you.
Same here. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Eighth Ward Alderman, Patty Smith.
Wow, why do I have to follow Hardburn? It's always a tough act. So Chuck, my first interaction with you was back in 2008, when Mayor Weisner honored me with the, um, uh, award of Volunteer of the Year. Um, I don't know that you even remember this, but you helped me prepare the ceremony. Beautiful ceremony that was at the Paramount. You were so kind and so nice to me and made me feel so much at home. And from that point on, I always knew I had a friend at City Hall. And, and to, uh, to Alderman Donnell's point, you never forgot my name from the first day on. You always addressed me, you know, long time in between before, you always knew who I was, and it made me feel very special. On, um, the point of an alderman, as one of the newer aldermen here, I realized that I have an annoyingly amount of questions to ask. And thank you for always, always picking up the phone, always being patient, and always listening to whatever I had to ask, no matter how crazy it was. You were, have been such a tremendous amount of help to me, to my ward, steering me in the right places, um, talking me off ledges when I needed to be talked off. That's kind of, kind of a joke, not off any. Get a little over the top sometimes. You're truly a one-of-a-kind human being. At some time, at some point, your position will be filled, but your shoes never will, Chuck. You, you have your years of service here in the city of Aurora, your dedication to us, you deserve the best retirement ever. So with that, enjoy the new journey in life. Happy retirement and you will be missed.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Thank you very much.
Ninth Ward Alderman, Edward Book.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I will be brief. I've served in a service organization, uh, decades ago. And the motto of that organization was taste, class, and pride. And when it, Clayton said we'd speak a little bit today, that's what I thought of, that, that is Chuck. Taste, class, and pride. He's a one-of-a-kind. And, uh, I'm so thankful, uh, that he was chosen by the mayor to be the deputy mayor, because he has that compassionate heart for our city, and, and he was the right man for the job. So, uh, Chuck, kick back, drink a cold one, and enjoy yourself.
Thank you, Alderman Buck.
Happy retirement.
Thank you.
Tenth Ward Alderman, Judd Loftus.
Buck, I just want to say thank you for always being there, for being the voice of reason when we have issues. And when you were head of property standards, or even now, when, like, uh, Wani said, when there's issues, you seem to be able to diffuse it and, and calm people down and get a consensus, which is awesome. So that is so invaluable and we are truly gonna miss you. And I'm gonna say one thing that nobody else has said, is you are a very well-dressed guy. People don't know how.
I don't even know that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ultimate Large, Sherman Jenkins.
Well Chuck, um, we go back to the days when you were first coming onto the council and, uh, how we could be able to go and talk with you about various issues and economic development. And, and as it was said, you know, you, you listened intently. And you were always involved in the community, and yes, people knew Chuck. And, you know, the, the slogan, everybody loves Chuck, uh, is one is just right on from the standpoint of us, ourselves as employees, working for the city, and when you were on the council and then working in, in property standards and doing, and being the deputy mayor, you really show that you were committed. You were always someone we could be able to reach, and I'm gonna tell you, as you're gonna enjoy, you're gonna love retirement, you're gonna love the grandkids, and you're gonna love when we go every year to the opening of White Sox game and hold up a nice cold one and say, go Sox.
Go Sox, alright.
Enjoy yourself.
Thank you, Alderman. I appreciate it, Sherman.
Alderman, Robert J. O'Connor, Alderman Large.
Well Chuck, um, all I can say is that everything that's been said, it's gonna be tough to come up with a couple of new things. Um, I'm gonna mention the fact that from 1993 to 2005, anytime you were in the parades, you got 10 times more yelled at than the rest of us did. Hey Chuck, how are you Chuck? Hey, Chuck, how are you, Chuck? And we kind of wondered what's going on here. You know, the only person that ever yelled hi to me was my wife. I couldn't figure out what was going on. In all the years that I've served, if you're going to talk about public servants, your characters of humanity, humility, a keen common sense, a great sense of humor, a great respectfulness, great dignity. That's what has made you so well received by everybody. And I don't know in all my years of any person that didn't like you, except for one, dealing with some payment of a bet on a Packers Bears game that I didn't think happened. So.
Right.
And I will certainly miss working with you directly on that issue in regard to the Bears and the Packers. But you're only a block away, so I'll, I'll be there.
Yeah.
And I want to say also that while there is lots of ideas of how to do government effectively, whether it's in, in practice or theory, what's, what the mayors, the governors, the president do and how to get things done. I think we have the gold standard in Aurora. And that is the fact that when there's a problem, we just say, let me call Chuck. He'll take care of it. So if that can be applied across the board, that works for everybody. So thank you. Thank you so much for all of your service. Tremendously enjoyed working with you all these years. We'll see you around. And I'll still be calling you because I know you'll have the answers. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you very much, Alderman O'Connor. Thank you.
And Chuck, before we have you say a few words, there's just one more presentation Mr. Mohammed would like, like to make. Clayton?
Deputy Mayor, we got a call from some of your old guys over there at East Aurora High School. They wanted to make sure that everybody knew how amazing of a football player you were back in the day. I know there's some Tomcats on the council. And so we wanted to showcase this great number 85 that you held it down for the, the Tomcats, class of '76 and beyond. We know that the White Sox are your, your favorite baseball team, but we also know you have a great love for the Bears, as Alderman O'Connor just talked about. And it's very apropos that your high school number was 85. And you, you know, the next decade of the 85 Bears. And, you know, there've been so many times that we've been out after events and things. And you just talk about those 85 Bears and you go down the list from Peyton to Fridge and Dennis McKinnon. You know, so before you speak, we just really wanted to again say thank you. And just to have one more shout out for you before you speak.
Hi, my name is Mike Singletary. This message for Chuck Nelson.
Oh, my God.
Chuck, after 27 years, you're calling it, hey, I'm going to retire. That's a long time. But not before a few people wanted to say thank you for the job that you have done. Thank you for your excellence. Thank you for your integrity. Thank you for being a class act. The saying in Aurora is everybody loves Chuck. Wow. Way to go, Chuck. God bless. Enjoy your retirement.
Unbelievable. Unbelievable. Holy cow. Wow, Mike Singletary. Wow. Not only one of the greatest middle linebackers who ever played in the NFL, but just one of the greatest human beings. Who probably walked, walked the earth. What, what an honor. I'm lost for words here. Where'd you dig up those old pictures? Wow. I, I thought those were all destroyed many years ago.
Thanks to Karen. Thanks to Karen Nelson.
All right, that explains that. Well, wow, I, I, I just don't know what to say. Boy, I, this is just unbelievable. I truly have been blessed certainly to have this opportunity, you know, almost through three decades to serve with many of you and serve the residents of Aurora. I, I certainly wish I had time tonight to thank everyone who's been involved in my life, my public service life. But we'd be here until Christmas 2021. So that's, I guess that's how long I've been around. I certainly wanted to thank my wife, Karen, and my two daughters and their families who have helped me along the way and provided that unconditional love and support that you can only get from home. And for those of you, for those of you who are serving or have served in public life, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I was fortunate to be elected in 1993 by the residents of the fourth ward. And at that time, I had the great opportunity to share the dais with Alderman O'Connor, Alderman Seville and Alderman Hartburns. I will always be grateful to them for taking me under their wings and showing me the ropes. I'll be grateful to the other aldermen that I served with too as well. And the one common thread that I think intertwines between all the city councils that I've been associated with is, is that, that sense of service. Sandy Struber, a couple of weeks ago, when we said goodbye to her from the alderman's office, talked about service. And for me, that, that's really what it's all about. It's that simple. It's not, it's not difficult. It's just having the ability to serve. When I was, when I was around in 93, as I indicated, three of the aldermen were serving back then. And they were very quick to introduce me to people, people throughout the city of Aurora, people beyond the city of Aurora. They really were able to open my eyes up, not only to the people who live in this community, but certainly outside of the community as well. So. I'm thankful to have had the great opportunity to have a chance to serve with Mayor Pierce and with Mayor Stover. Both of those individuals certainly had their own way of governing and certainly found it to be very, very effective as well. I'm also thankful, I owe much of my thanks, Mayor Irvin, as you mentioned, to Mayor Tom Weisner, who brought me on in 2006 as an assistant chief of staff. Mayor Weisner relished his time as mayor. He governed, all of you know this, he governed with passion and devotion. And Mayor Weisner truly loved the city. I had the opportunity to work under Mayor O'Connor for a very brief period of time when I was in neighborhood standards. And he governed with the same style and demeanor that we have come familiar with for all the years that Bob has served on the city council. Mayor O'Connor would conduct our executive staff meetings while sitting in the middle of the table. And I remember the first executive meeting, usually the mayor sits at one head or the other. And Mayor O'Connor came in and took, took his seat right in the middle of the table. And I, I found that very, very interesting, as did several of the other department heads. It probably explains why, it explains his style certainly of governing. And it also explains why he's been reelected so many times to represent the residents of Aurora. Mayor Irvin, you offered me an opportunity that had never existed before in the city's history, become the first deputy mayor. I remember you and I discussing the responsibilities of a deputy mayor and you entrusted me to develop a, to develop the position based on what I thought it would take to improve our service levels in the mayor's office. Mayor Irvin, you, you certainly are a bold, forward-thinking and inclusive leader. You absolutely thrive on meeting challenges. And everyone can attest to this, Mayor. You thrive on meeting challenges and creating opportunities that will better our community. It's just amazing the type of leadership you have. And yes, Mayor, I do vividly remember having that cold beer over at the roundhouse, which, which you paid for, by the way. And as I mentioned the other day, you know, so many years later, you offered me this great opportunity to serve the citizens of Aurora. And you never forgot that, that offer. And Mayor, you're a man of your words. And that's somewhat rare these days in the political arena, actually some, somewhat rare beyond the, the arena of politics. There's no question in my mind, Mayor, that you're the right person at the right time to lead the city. And sir, it's been an honor to serve as your deputy mayor and to serve this extremely talented team, to serve with them that you have put together. As you indicated, Alex, Alexandra, Alex Voight, Maria Lindsay, just to, just to name a few. We've had so many wonderful people there. And the support is, has just been unbelievable. And, and do I dare say the love, and really, and I mean that sincerely, it's just been unbelievable. Lastly, I, I want to thank all the city employees, past and present, for a job well done. There were many instances where a city employee was able to go, to go out and provide a service. And it certainly showed well to the mayor's office and showed well to me too as well. So again, I am forever grateful to all our city employees. And finally, I want to just thank the many residents who took time over my years to volunteer for various causes and for their ongoing support of the city of Aurora. In closing, I do want to thank all of you again for your comments, your well wishes. It has been an honor for me to be associated with you, to serve with you. And I look forward to the next chapter of my life. And I guess lastly, I, the last thing I'll say is that I want to thank the residents. The residents of Aurora were providing me a paycheck for over 20, for close to 28 years. So thank you very much, Mayor. City council, thank you. City staff, I want to thank all of you for what you do. And residents of Aurora, thank you very much. God bless all of you.
God bless you, Chuck. This city would not be what it is today without every, everything you've put into it over the last almost 28 years. And I'm going to ask you to do us one final official favor as deputy mayor. One of these meetings, will you, will you close the side of this meeting, sir?
Sure. So if, boy, I don't have a script, but is there any other business to come before the, no, that's a, that's a council.
Yeah.
Is that it?
That's it, bro.
Is there any other business to come before the committee of the whole tonight? If not, is there a call for an German?
Tell him move.
Tell him move.
A move, a move has been made and seconded. All in favor? God bless all of you.
Or clerk call the roll.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes, 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 yes. Everybody loves Chuck.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
The 12, yes.
This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much.